Hafadaj and Manana Sizou, as colleagues, I mean a 135th legislature in Guam is called to order. At this time, I would recognize the good Senator from San Onorito. Senator Mary Torres, could you kindly lead us in prayer? Please stand, colleagues.
Gina Anitata, Ilahinyas, and Espirito Santo, amen. Zuzutata, Nitoru Hanatsinya. We pray for your guidance today during this post-election season and during this pandemic when uncertainty and despair are escalating across our nation. We pray, dear Lord, for unity so that we, as leaders, can stay true to our obligation to serve our nation and our island, free from political barriers. May we draw inspiration from the Book of Romans 15. It is written, "May the God who gives endurance and encouragement give you a spirit of unity among yourselves as you follow Jesus Christ so that with one heart and mouth you may glorify the God and Father of our Lord, Jesus Christ." Umatuna itata, Zani Ilahinyas, and Espirito Santo. Tai guihi ututunya pagu, Zani minaihinekupnahaani, amen. Gina Anitata, Ilahinyas, and Espirito Santo, amen.
Sizou Smasi, Senator Mary Torres. For the recognition of a recipient of email loden mustakiluna sacrificial, Senator Regina Bisco Lee, you are recognized at this time.
Sizou Smasi, Madam Speaker, and good morning, colleagues. On behalf of a grateful island and country, we honor Mesitendent First Class, World War II, Guillermo LG Kitano and the family of Mesitendent First Class Guillermo LG Kitano for making the ultimate sacrifice in service and defense of our island and country.
Sizou Smasi, Senator Lee. And for the recitation of the Inefresi, Senator Lee kindly lead us again.
Inefresi, ginenimas takalu, giyana soku, imas takulum, gi kurasonu, zanimas fugu, naninasinyahu, huufresin maisazu, parabai patahi, zanu dependi, ihinangi, ikutura, ilingwahi, iayri, iharam, zanitanutamoru. Niiren shaku de retsugininaszus tata, esti huafetmagi hiliwi biblia, zanibanderahu, ibanderaan Guam.
Sizou Smasi, Senator Lee. And for the singing of the Guam hymn in Chamorro and the singing of the national anthem, would the gentlemen members lead us in the singing? Sizou Smasi, gentlemen. Colleagues, please be seated at this time. Manana Sizou, Madam Clerk, Kajimangagigwini Putfabot Roko.
Senator Castro. Senator Lee.
Buenas, gagea.
Senator Marsh Titano. Senator Moylan. Senator Munya. Speaker Munya Barnes.
Manana Sizou, gagea.
Vice Speaker Nelson. Senator Perez.
Here.
Senator Rogel. Senator Sinagastin.
Gagezu.
Senator Shelton. Senator Tai Deui. Senator Pito Turlahi. Senator Therese Turlahi. Senator Torres.
Gagezu.
Madam Speaker, there is a quorum.
Sizou Smasi, Madam Clerk. At this time, Assistant Majority Leader, you are recognized.
Sainama Asimaskerhalu. I move to approve the Legislative Journal dated October 12, 2020, subject to corrections.
Colleagues, on the motion to approve the Legislative Journal dated October 12, 2020, are there any objections? Seeing or hearing none. Motion carries. Assistant Majority Leader, you are recognized. Senator Marsh Titano.
Sainama Asimaskerhalu. There are communications and petitions. I move that they be appended to today's session journal.
On the motion that communications and petitions be appended to today's session journal, are there any objections? Seeing or hearing none. Motion carries. Assistant Majority Leader, Senator Marsh Titano, you are still recognized.
Maskerhalu. There are messages from Imagahag in Guam, and I move that they be appended to today's session journal.
On the motion that messages of, from Imagahag in Guam, be appended to today's session journal, are there any objections? Seeing or hearing none. Motion carries. Assistant Majority Leader, you are still recognized.
Maskerhalu. There are reports of standing committees, and I move that they be appended to today's session journal.
Colleagues, on the motion that reports of standing committees be appended to today's session journal, are there any objections? Seeing or hearing none. Motion carries. Assistant Majority Leader, Senator Marsh Titano, you are still recognized.
Maskerhalu. There are no reports of special, oh, excuse me, select committees.
Sizou Smasi, Assistant Majority Leader, you can still proceed.
Maskerhalu. I move that bills introduced, Bills Number 419-35COR, and 421-35COR, through 427-35COR, and resolutions introduced, Resolutions Number 385-35LS through 387-35LS, and 388-35COR through 393-35COR be deemed to have been given their first reading.
On that motion, colleagues, are there any objections? Seeing or hearing none. Motion carries. Assistant Majority Leader, you still recognized.
Maskerhalu. I move to excuse those not present for today's session.
On that motion, colleagues, are there any objections? Seeing or hearing none. Motion carries. Assistant Majority Leader, you are still recognized.
Maskerhalu. I move that all congratulatory, commendatory, and condolence resolutions introduced today and for the remainder of this legislative session be considered first read and adopted to allow the Legislative Council to make technical corrections and to add all senators as cosponsors.
On that motion, colleagues, are there any objections? Seeing or hearing none. Motion carries. At this time, I'll recognize Senator Rogel.
Thank you, Madam. Madam Speaker, I move to place Bill Number 401-35COR as amended by the Committee on Economic Development, Agriculture, Maritime Transportation, Power, and Energy Utilities and Emergency Response onto the session agenda.
On that motion, Senator Regina Lee, I'll recognize you.
Sizou Smasi, Madam Speaker. And just a point of information for the body. This, the committee report for 401-35COR was duly filed by the Committee on Rules, and it's been up online since the 14th of November. Sizou Smasi.
Thank you, Committee on Rules Chair, Senator Lee. On that motion, are there any objections? Seeing or hearing none. Motion carries. Senator Rogel, still recognize you for another motion.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. From the Committee on Economic Development, Agriculture, Maritime Transportation, Power, and Energy Utilities and Emergency Response, I move to place the appointment of Dorothy Perez Harris to serve as a member of the Port Authority of Guam Board of Directors onto the session agenda.
On that motion, are there any objections? Seeing or hearing none. Motion carries. Senator Rogel. Assistant Majority Leader, I'm going to go ahead and recognize you at this time. Senator Marsh Titano, you have the floor.
Sizou Smasi, Maskerhalu. I move to place in the voting file from the Committee on Heritage and the Arts, Parks, Guam Products, Hagatna Revitalization, Self-Determination, and Regional Affairs, hereby reports on the nomination of Roki A. Alcantara to serve as Director of the Department of Parks and Recreation with the recommendation to do confirm.
On the motion to place in the voting file from the Roki A. Alcantara to serve as Director of Department of Parks and Recreation, are there any objections? Seeing or hearing none. Motion carries. Assistant Majority Leader, you still have the floor.
Sizou Smasi, Maskerhalu. I move to place in the voting file from the Committee on Heritage and the Arts, Parks, Guam Products, Hagatna Revitalization, Self-Determination, and Regional Affairs, hereby reports out the nomination of Simone E. P. Ballinger to serve as Member Literature Representative of the Guam Council on the Arts and Humanities Agency, Board of Directors, with the recommendation to do confirm.
Colleagues, on that motion, are there any objections? Seeing or hearing none. Motion carries. At this time, I'm going to recognize Senator Pito Turlahi. You have the floor.
Undanklen, as Sizou Smasi, Madam Speaker. I move to place in the voting file from the Committee on Public Safety, Board of Safety, Military and Veterans Affairs, Marriage Council, Infrastructure, and Public Transit, hereby reports out the nomination of James M. Casalo to serve as a member of the Guam Contractors License Board with the recommendation to confirm.
On that motion, are there any objections? Seeing or hearing none. Motion carries. Senator Pito Turlahi, you still have the floor for another motion.
Sizou Smasi, talum, Madam Speaker. Thank you very much. I move to place in the voting file from the Committee of Public Safety, Board of Safety, Military and Veterans Affairs, Marriage Council, Infrastructure, and Public Transit, hereby reports out the nomination of Madalino G. Gonzavo to serve as a member of the Guam Building Code Council with the recommendation to confirm.
On that motion, colleagues, are there any objections? Seeing or hearing none. Motion carries. Senator Pito, you still have the...
Sizou Smasi, talum, Madam Speaker. I move to place in the voting file from the Committee on Public Safety, Board of Safety, Military and Veterans Affairs, Marriage Council, Infrastructure, and Public Transit, hereby reports out the nomination of Anthony C. Paulino to serve as Counsel, as a member of the Guam Building Code Council with the recommendation to confirm.
On that motion, for Anthony C. Paulino to serve as a member for the Licensed Real Estate Professional Representative of the Guam Building Code, are there any objections? Seeing or hearing none. Motion carries. Thank you, Senator Pito. Assistant Majority Leader, Senator Marsh Titano, you have the floor again.
Sainama Asimaskerhalu. I move to place in the voting file from the Committee on Heritage and the Arts, Parks, Guam Products, Hagatna Revitalization, Self-Determination, and Regional Affairs, hereby reports out the nomination of William D. Pesch to serve as a member of the Guam Council of the Arts and Humanities Agency, Board of Directors, with the recommendation to do confirm.
On that motion, are there any objections? Seeing or hearing none. Motion carries. Senator Rogel, you are recognized at this time.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move to place in the voting file from the Committee on Economic Development, Agriculture, Maritime Transportation, Power, and Energy Utilities and Emergency Response, hereby reports out the nomination of Dorothy Perez Harris to serve as a member of Port Authority of Guam Board of Directors with the recommendation to do confirm.
On that motion, colleagues, are there any objections? Seeing or hearing none. Motion carries. We are still in motions. Senator... Senator Louise Munya. I'm going to ask you if you can do a notwithstanding motion to go back to motion so that you can, so that we can address your bill. I apologize.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Notwithstanding the House rules, can we go back to motions, please?
On that motion, without any objections. Motion carry. I'm going to go ahead and recognize you, Senator Munya. Please proceed.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move to add Bill Number 285-35 as introduced by myself, Louise B. Munya. Would you like me to read the title?
Yes, please. And who introduced it?
Thank you. Introduce by myself, Louise B. Munya, is an act to amend subsection 77302A of Article 3, Chapter 77, Title 10, Guam Code annotated, and to add a new subsection 34126 to Article 1, Chapter 34, Title 10, Guam Code, and to add a new subsection 60205 to Article 2, Chapter 60, Title 5, Guam Code, and to repeal and reenact subsection 70.10.3, Article 1, Chapter 70, Title 9, Guam Code annotated as subsection 34127 of Article 1, Chapter 34, Title 10, Guam Code annotated. This is relative to authorizing volunteers to enforce animal abuse laws. Madam Speaker, this was on the agenda for the core meeting last week, Thursday, but unable to be cleared. And I'd like to add this to the session agenda under the second reading.
Thank you, Senator Munya. That was Bill 285-35COR, am I right?
Yes, yes.
Senator Regina Bisco Lee, I will acknowledge you at this time.
Sizou Smasi, Madam Speaker. If I could request just the one-minute brief, one-minute recess, and if I could clarify, it's 285?
285-35.
Sizou Smasi.
We're in a moment's recess. I mean a 135th legislature in Guam is back from recess. I will acknowledge the Committee on Rules Chair. Senator Regina Bisco Lee, you still have the floor.
Sizou Smasi, Madam Speaker. And just a point of information for the body. The committee report for this bill was filed on the 30th of October and is available online for our colleagues and the public. Sizou Smasi.
Sizou Smasi, Senator Lee. On that motion, are there any objections? Seeing or hearing none. Motion carries. Senator Munya, you still have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move to add Bill Number 206-35COR as introduced by myself, Louise B. Munya, is an act to add a new subsection 25A204 to Article 2 of Chapter 25A of Title 9, Guam Code annotated, relative to creating the offense of production of child pornography as a first-degree felony.
Senator Lee, please, you have the floor.
Sizou Smasi, Madam Speaker. Just arises a point of information. On Bill 206-35COR, this report was duly filed by the Committee on Rules on the 13th of November and is available online.
I apologize, Madam Chair. Senator Lee, I was discussing with the clerk, so everything is in order. Thank you very much. On that motion, colleagues, are there any objections? Seeing or hearing none. Motion carries. Colleagues, we are now on...
Madam Speaker, I have one more.
Senator Munya.
Thank you, sorry. Thank you. Just one more, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Munya. I will acknowledge you.
Thank you. I move to add Bill Number 207-35COR as introduced by myself. It's Louise B. Munya. It's an act to add a new subsection 18137 to Chapter 18, Title 10, Guam Code annotated, relative to authorizing the co-location of massage therapy and practice services within cosmetology establishments.
Senator Lee, you have the floor.
Sizou Smasi. This committee report as well was filed on the 13th of November and is available online.
Thank you. On the motion, are there any objections? Seeing or hearing none. Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Senator Louise Munya. Colleagues, we are on second reading file. I'm going to recognize Bill Number 133-35COR. Senator James C. Moylan, you are recognized at this time.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I'd like to move Bill 133-35 as amended by Committee on Environmental Revenue and Taxation and Procurement On the third reading filed, and I'd like to discuss it.
Can you read the title, Senator James? And just note for the record that it's a COR?
Yes, Madam Speaker. Bill 13335 is an act to amend subsection 15108 of Chapter 15, Title 18, Guam Code annotated. It's relative to reducing the cost for filing the Articles of Organization for a Limited Liability Corporation, LLC, as amended by Committee on Environmental Revenue and Taxation and Procurement. It's COR, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Jim Moylan. James Moylan, you may proceed.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. The Limited Liability Corporation, or LLC, is a preferred business structure for many entities, primarily for the limited liability protection which it provides shareholders. This becomes more vital as a company grows and seeks additional investments for shareholders. LLCs are not necessarily a large entities, which the term corporation tends for us to assume. These are small retailers, coffee shops, restaurants, consultants, realtors, and much more. On a national level, the filing for LLCs range as low as $40 to as high as $500. Now, if you take it from the state-to-state perspective, LLC filing fees average at around $127. On Guam, these fees are $1,000. I'd like to reiterate that the filing fee is a one-time fee. This is not an annual renewal figure as the annual license fee is $100. This legislation is simple. It is a business-friendly measure. It's an opportunity for Guam to attract more LLC filings. And basically, if we can create reasonable filing fees, more LLCs will be filed on the island. Some may say that reducing the one-time fee will impact the government coffers. But the reality is that if you lower the fee, it will be more filings. Sole proprietorship license holders who currently pay $50 a year on renewables may consider attaining LLC instead and paying a higher renewal license fee. If we lower the filing fees, we may see more consultants, realtors, coffee shops, and other small entities seeking a business structure which allows obtaining additional capital much easier. If we are lowering the filing fee, we have the opportunity to attract outside investors, and we would have a reasonable filing fee to offer. Colleagues, Bill 13335 is a business-friendly measure. It allows Guam to be on the level playing field with many states when it comes to attracting business activity. Personally, I would like to reduce the fee further, but I understand the economics behind it. Is $250 a fair amount? I would presume it is. And those who testify at the public hearing also felt it is reasonable amount. With our present economic condition, our island needs to review as many proposals as possible to recreate a business-friendly environment, one which may not only support business but will create jobs and get more of our people back to work. Bill 13335 is one small piece in the pie, but a critical one, and thus I seek my colleague's support. I do also want to reiterate that while there is discussion in reviewing all our licensing fees in general with the intent of modernizing them, we shouldn't use this as a means to hold the measure from advancing. hold the measure from advancing. That process will take some time and probably a lot of time. However, we have the opportunity of addressing the fees for LLC today and to make them reasonable for more small entities, inclusive of future ones, to take advantage. Thank you, Madam Speaker. I look forward to the discussion on Bill 133. Thank you.
One for better, Senator Moylan. On the main motion, Senator Mary Torres, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I rise in support of Bill Number 133-35-COR. This is precisely the type of measures that Guam needs to start engaging, measures that remove barriers, that discourage people from entering into lawful business on Guam. One of the things that many of us have noted in this pandemic climate is that people have-- the spirit of entrepreneurship is fostering and is starting to gain traction. It shows the need for people to have some economic stability on our island and to be self-sufficient in many ways. But I believe that what this reduction in the LLC fees can do is not only add greater incentive for people to file for limited liability companies, but it also is one step closer to diversifying Guam's economy and relying on what we know traditionally happens in communities that don't have the luxury of a safety net. Entrepreneurship is something that people start to engage in, and I believe that the more people that we have engaging in businesses that are filed that allow for proper regulation and proper taxation is really the way that we need to go in these post-pandemic circumstances or even in the pandemic circumstances. So I commend the author, Senator Moylan, for introducing this measure. While it may look like it will hurt the collection of fees, I think that the upside to this is that it will encourage more people to consider going into business locally and perhaps even attracting limited liability companies to Guam for investment purposes. But it's certainly something that has bearing on a wide spectrum of our community members and a great benefit to them by reducing the filing fee by $800. So I, again, just want to reiterate that I rise in support of this measure. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Torres. Senator Munia, on the main motion.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I also rise in support of the reduction of the filing fee, and we have to remember, too, that this is not a licensing fee for LLCs. This is a filing fee for Articles of Organization. And to be fair-- Madam Speaker, I personally feel like it should be fair to be the filing fee, just like it is for corporations. And so I sent an amendment, Madam Speaker, to the clerks already to reduce that fee even further down to $100.
There is a motion to amend this bill to bring the price down from $250 to $100. Is Minority Leader on the amendment by Senator Louise?
Sisusmasi, and good morning, my colleagues. And I stand in full support of this amendment, and the reason being is that the LLC at-- or not the LLC, but the corporation filing fee is 100, and we know that corporations are much larger than LLCs. LLCs are smaller businesses. So it makes sense, Madam Speaker, that we do the same amount that we give for larger corporations that we do for the smaller businesses. So that would be in line with what's currently now for these large companies. So I stand in full support. Lowering it down, I'd actually like to make it lower than what we charge larger corporations on these fees because of small businesses. But at this point, I think, you know, taking it down from 1,000 down to 100 would have justification, definitely justification to it. So I stand in full support, lowering it to 100. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Minority Leader. On the amendment, Senator Bisco-Lee.
Sisusmasi, Madam Speaker. Just a question for the mover of this amendment, if she would yield.
Go ahead and state your question, please.
So there was a fiscal report that was submitted by BBMR for this bill, I believe, and so I just wanted to know if the proffer of this amendment could tell the body how much of an impact that would be to Guam revenues if we chose to decrease the amount from $250 to 100.
Thank you, Senator Lee. Senator Munia, would you like to yield to the question?
Sure, Madam Speaker. So I pulled up the fiscal note, and I'm just reading through the number of LLCs that have filed the Articles of Corporation to 230. If you take the math there and times it by 100, and that would be 2,300. And so if you just take a look at the differences, the way the file, the fiscal note was filed, yeah, there would be a larger impact, of course, obviously. Right now, at this point, with $250, the impact, total fees would be $57,500. And so the difference from 1,000 to 250 would be 1,000-- excuse me, 172,500. So, yeah, I haven't really done the math exactly with that amount, but, yeah, I could do it real quick and give it to her.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. If I could just request a brief recess, I think it's important that we have the numbers in front of us and we make a decision like this. So I would just ask that we could get some clarification on those and help to inform our body a little bit better. Thank you.
We will take just a moment's recess. Ymina Chantais-Cinco, Nales, Latun, and Guam is back from office. Senator Lee, you still have the floor.
Sisusmasi, Madam Speaker. I believe the mover of the amendment has additional information to share, so I'd like to just yield to her at this time.
Thank you very much. Anyone else on the amendment? Senator Joseph Augustine, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. To the author of the amendment, the amendment is to reduce it to $100 instead of $250. Am I correct?
Yes.
Okay. I wanted to really speak to the author of the bill. It's really what my questions lean to, because I'm not in support of-- I'm trying to make sure that we all understand that when you file-- when you apply for a business, at the end of the year, you do all understand part of your taxation is to file your expenses. Am I correct? I just want to make sure we understand that. That's one. When you do that, you need to understand that the Dave Santos Act today, the amended or even the prior, you can write off up to $250,000. And my understanding from the beginning, and I would like to speak when the author of the whole bill comes up, you're writing off your first year. So even if you pay $1,000, you're writing off $1,000, because the likelihood is there's not one LLC that's going to make $250,000 in a year. Okay? So if you keep bringing things down, they're writing it off anyway. So the government's not going to make any-- the government's not going to make any money, and it's never the intent-- and I'm not sending a message that the government's to make money. But as you say initially, it's $1,000. Now you want to bring it down? The intent of the bill is to bring it to 250. Now you want to bring it out to 100? It's very hard for me to understand and to hear from any of my colleagues telling me, "It's a good bill because it's for the small business." The Dave Santos Act is for small business. It's to give them all the break they need. What more breaks do you need? Well, if you're writing off everything in taxes and not paying anything, what did you lose? You didn't lose a penny. You pay $1,000, you pay $250, you write it all off. Unless you can please explain how you want to do anything, and as my colleagues, as we move forward, in the next term, we're going to be dealing in the budget, and as you scream for money or streamline, just please understand, every time you chip at the bank, don't look at the bank to find money, because you've taken it away. And as you reduce the taxes, this is a small amount, based on the BBMR report, to bring it down, we lose-- the government loses, what, 50%? 75%? The 250 to $100 now? And maybe you can tell me, what is their filing fee? $100 a year? Everything is written off every year. And most of these folks, if you really look at it, you have-- you can sign up as an LLC, limited liability corporation. When it comes to filing any claims against a company, if you're a limited liability, it's not the company, or it's not the individual, it's the company. If the company's broke to begin with, there's no insurance for anybody wants to file any claims against them. There's no protection to the common people. If there's any wrongful act that the LLC did, there's no course of action for them. So I would just be careful. I'm not in support of any reduction, because I wanted to make sure that we understand what the reduction is for. It's a one-time filing fee, first year. If I'm correct, most of them write it off anyway. So what they thought they paid, they saved already in taxes. The following year, because of this pandemic, if anybody can make up to $250,000, God bless them all. And if they exceed over $250,000 because of the amended Dave Santos Act, they pay at the most 3% GRT. So as we move along, my colleagues, please be mindful of what you're saying, because I'm in support of all business, helping every business we can help. We did that with the amended Dave Santos Act. Any further more changes? Just understand that we-- and I ask the author of the bill itself, please take a look at all the businesses. You want to reduce one, you need to increase another. If you want to bring balance, you need to look at it all, because you look at one LLC, what's tomorrow? Corporation, what's the next one? We're going to go through this. We should have just done one good wrap-up of everybody, and that's something that my office has been looking at, to do a wrap-up of all the businesses. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Sinagastino. Register, that is an objection to the Munia amendment. On the Munia amendment, anyone else wishing to speak? There has been an objection. Would you like to close or call for the vote? On the motion--
I'd like to close, please, if I can. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Speaker, and I appreciate the remarks or the testimony from the last speaker. I really do. We have to remember also, Madam Speaker, that what we're doing here is we're reducing it from the original Bill 250 to 100, and we're doing that because corporations are only paying $100 now. LLC is paying $1,000 now. I don't understand where the fairness is or why that filing fee went all the way up to $1,000 in the first place. Like one of the retiring speakers said, we're trying to encourage people now to open up more businesses. People are becoming a little bit more business savvy now, trying to make money for themselves. And I think reducing it even further will encourage more people to get into businesses and sustain themselves financially. And so this really is just opening up that opportunity for more of them to start up businesses under the LLC. Again, we have to remember, the reduction of the original bill to this amendment is $150. It's a 60% reduction in fees or a total reduction of $34,500 for net fees, $23,000. You have to excuse me, Madam Speaker, my math skills have gone down a little bit since I turned a year older. But it doesn't-- this doesn't-- this does not include the increase in filings that will result from the new filings. The Dave Santos Act is for the BPT. This fee must be paid before businesses even get a business license and make any sales. So, Madam Speaker, I hope that my colleagues would consider supporting this so that we can support more small businesses and to encourage more people to start up small businesses under the LLC and reduce the fee from 250 to 100. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Munia. There has been an objection. All those in support of the amendment by Senator Munia, please raise your hand. One, two, three, four. Motion fails. Senator Munia?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. That's all.
On the main motion, anyone else wishing to speak? On the main motion, Senator Therese?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. At first glance at the bill, of course, you know, nobody would object to reducing fees for corporations right now, and we know that they are struggling and we want to encourage them. My issue is very similar to the Committee Chair on Appropriations in that we've passed the FY '21 budget. We use these fees in that FY '21 budget. We put them to the Department of Revenue and Taxation. I think all corporation fees go there, and they use this for compliance. We were just told by the Department of Revenue and Taxation, they have four compliance officers. We were just told by the Department of Revenue and Taxation, they have four compliance officers for all their compliance mandates. And so we know, you know, that we as a government, we're trying to balance our ability to perform those functions and ensure compliance across the board and, and encourage small businesses. There was, you know, the fiscal note shows that every year, they estimate about 230 businesses filing LLCs. And if you look back at, at when the bill was first, I mean, the law was first passed, and then it was amended, you know, there, it was actually vetoed at one point because of the concerns for LLCs, that the lack of protection for, for or the liability transfers, you know, that it's not the same liability or protections for, for persons. And so actually, these are not our, some of our smaller businesses, some of these are our larger contractors on Guam are forming LLCs. And actually, what an LLC allows is that you don't get taxed as a corporation, not like a regular corporation, you know, we get corporation taxes as well. An LLC, the tax goes to the individuals and wherever they live. So in other words, if I, you know, form an LLC with you and I live in Saipan, then I don't pay any taxes on Guam. Or I don't pay income taxes on Guam, I pay my income taxes where I live. And so all of that was recognized when the bill was, I mean, the law was, you know, vetoed back then, and there were very many concerns raised. And so, but, but, you know, while we are trying to reduce fees, I just think we have to, to realize or at least plan for that, like, I don't know, you know, if the author, this is immediately effective, yet we've already pretty much spent this money. This is 172,000 to the Department of Revenue and Taxation. And I, I guess what I'm trying to say, Madam Speaker, is it doesn't look like it's been a real discouragement, I guess, to, to these businesses to file. As I said, the, the protection that this gives them is the protection from liability that LLCs give them is very much worth $1,000 to, to many of these businesses. And I know that there was, as the appropriations chair said, we have waived all business privilege taxes for, for small corporations. And at least we should limit the impacts of these types of measures. It doesn't say what the Department of Revenue and, I, I'm just looking through the fiscal notes to see what is the Department of Revenue and Taxation going to do, you know, with this decrease. And I'm just, you know, guessing, and I don't know, because there's not enough in the committee report to tell me what is the impact to them, what are they going to do without that money? Are they going to lessen their compliance? And I don't want that. So that's, I guess, my concern. I don't know really the, the answer. And it's possible that if we reduce these fees, that we could plan for it going forward. But yeah, we're in the middle of a, a current fiscal year, and I just want to know the impact on that. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Therese. On the main motion, Senator Will Castro, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I was, it was good to hear the feedback from my colleagues, and perhaps there'll be an opportunity to address and debate the issue of lost revenues. Maybe the quick response would be, maybe we should look at how to reduce GovGuam expenditures. Maybe we can debate the issue of creating the right climate for other businesses to, to start up. Maybe we can even debate the size and the revenue ceiling for which one can qualify as an LLC. Perhaps, Madam Speaker, perhaps, or the balance of my time, if I can reserve that. But before I get into that, I really just want to register for the record my, my sentiments as a member of this community. So to Mr. Moylan, thank you for the bill. I think it's an outstanding measure. I rise in support of it. It's because, in my opinion, it addresses a longstanding paradox, this LLC concept. And I can remember, Madam Speaker, gosh, coming out of high school, I was at the University of Guam, and I remember, I remember pulling the forms at the time and being prepared to pay that $1,000, you know? And that was a lot of money for me as a college student in the 90s. Frankly, if you, if you look at it now, it's, it's still a lot of money, and especially after the results of my delegate race, I, I think, I think it's, it's worth a lot more than $1,000. But, but that's just for jokes. But to my point, Madam Speaker, on a more serious note, you know, I want to encourage my colleagues to stay focused on what it is we're discussing. We're discussing the reduction of a certain fee from 1,000 to, well, 250 or whatever it is Mr. Moylan's bill stands at. For what? So that you can protect, you can protect these small business owners. That's what an LLC is, right? It's to limit the liabilities of those businesses so that, so that in many cases, you cannot reach past the corporation and take the house or the car or the property that you worked so hard for. That's the purpose of this business structure. As in my mind, from this vantage point, having paid that 1,000 bucks, and by the way, that business didn't make me a million dollars, but from my vantage point, this is the small business protection structure. That's, to me, that's what it comes down to. But, but I want to reduce it down to a very simple concept, you know? Small business structure with protections, yet big entry fee. So that's the reality I deal with here, Madam Speaker. I, I think it's, it's an important mechanism when corporations form using this. And, and there are certain provisions that you have to meet. You can actually grow out of this, this business formation. You can't, not everybody can be an LLC based on your revenues. And so I just want to close by saying, you know, I, I can concur, I concur with my colleague that there's no doubt you may lose some GovGuam revenue, but we're certainly going to gain in protecting our people who want to reduce the risk, not the risk of, of losing money in a business, right? That, that's the risk of doing business. But you're going to reduce the risk of someone losing their life's work, whether it's a home or a car or maybe, maybe real property that you have that your parents passed on to you. You see, because things happen. And, and there's no guarantee either in terms of these protections, whether it's a, some type of a lawsuit or, or something else, a long-term lease that you can't get out of. And I'm just looking out for that person that, that wants to jump in and say, "I want to put my, you know, my life savings of 10,000." And then something happens, and now they're going after the whole kit and caboodle, the farm, everything in between. I don't think that's okay. It, it's, it's the reality, but if this takes us closer to helping those types of people and protecting them, Madam Speaker, I rise in support of Mr. Moylan's bill 133. Thank you.
Thank you. Any, Senator Castro, anyone else wanting to speak on the main motion? Senator Justin Augustine, you are acknowledged.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Speaker. You know, I mentioned earlier the difference between LLC and a corporation, or maybe a regular business. The difference between LLC, owned by one or more individuals versus corporations owned by shareholders. No matter which entity you choose, both entities offer big benefits to your business. Incorporating a business allows you to establish credibility and professionalism. I've asked the author. Just take a look at it. There was comments earlier about corporation paying less. There was also recent colleagues said that LLCs towards a small business. Well, let's, let's identify them. How much can you make if you're going to be an LLC on Guam? How much should you be allowed to make so that we can keep you in the small business? I know for a fact that there are companies on Guam that are LLC that they make big money. And for my colleague, recent speaker, we both ride motorcycles. The former owner of Harley-Davidson was an LLC. That's not small. That's a six-digit business. That's not small. That's very close to a corporation, because they work out of a trademark out of Harley-Davidson's in the mainland, those are billion-dollar industry. But that being said, I have no objection in finding ways to reduce the LLC's filing fees, which is only annual. But to bring it down to 250 versus, it was stated, the average is 500, the max is 500,000 in the mainland, $500 in the mainland? Then why not we just meet what the mainland has, and then let's take a look at the corporation, look at everybody else's, and find out are the appropriate fees being charged for everyone filing? With that note, ma'am, thank you, Madam Speaker. I object to the bill, period. Thank you.
Minority Leader, I will recognize you at this time.
Sujus Massey, Madam Speaker, and I am speaking on the main motion of the bill.
On the main motion.
Madam Speaker, I think that everybody realizes that without the businesses out there, there are going to be no taxes or any way to pay any government of Guam employee, let alone the roads, the hospitals, any place in there. What this bill is simply doing is giving a, not a handout, but a hand up to those small businesses, which are the backbones of this community. You know, for, it, it, it shows you that the comments that were made earlier, it, it's not, it's not about helping the community or rebuilding our crumbling economy. It's about making sure what? That we have money to, to the government of Guam? Well, there, it's not going to be there if there are no businesses willing to come to Guam. Guam has become very business unfriendly. I think this, this election proved it, that the people of Guam voted for more people who are more business-friendly. 30,000 jobs. Where did they lose those jobs? They lost those jobs from businesses closing down. And if we don't do anything in this legislature to help the businesses to rebuild, then we're, we're going to be in bad shape, then for sure, there's going to be no money coming in to the government of Guam. Madam Speaker, this bill, what it does, it gives a hand up, encourages the people to still, you know, take a chance, make a sacrifice. You know, when, when you open up a business, you're putting everything online here. And if the business doesn't work out, you've lost. Most people have lost their life savings trying to open up a business. So Madam Speaker, this is something, I, I wish we could do more. I wish it went down to 100, the same as corporations. But that didn't pass. But this is a part that we can do, what we can do to help the business community out there to rebuild, to get those jobs back online to all those 30,000 people who have been out of jobs. Where do you think they worked at? They worked mostly at small businesses. So let's do our part. Thank you, Madam Speaker, and I stand full support of this bill.
You're welcome, Minority Leader. Anyone else on the main motion? If not, Senator Perez, you are recognized on the main motion.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I just want to, I guess, provide some information regarding LLCs, and they're, they could be some of the largest corporations or businesses such as the Enrons of the world. And I think it's important to note that fact that LLCs somehow have become conflated with small businesses. And I do understand the need to increase the economic activities of our island. But I think, you know, we should take measured approaches in, in doing so. And for me, it's not very clear what the impacts of this would be. You know, generally, it would increase, I mean, looking at if this were built, if this bill were to pass, it would definitely increase probably the, the amount of LLC filings. And just because, also, that's another point, is that just because they file as an LLC doesn't guarantee that there's going to be a business and that there's going to be revenue coming from a business. The other thing too is that, you know, the, the amount of work in regards to compliance. So DRT did not mention this in their, in their testimony, but it, it could potentially require more work to ensure that businesses that file as an LLC and are working and operating as an LLC require that DRT to oversee compliance of these corporations. And it's pretty drawn out, if you, if you read the laws, there's a lot to look into in addition to reading through the articles of incorporation. So this is a lot of work to do on the part of DRT to ensure compliance. And as you can see, we already have many issues with compliance and ensuring compliance of the current laws that we have in place. So I, I do have reservations about this bill and concerns that are not fully vetted. So, thank you, thank you, Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Perez. Anyone else on the main motion? If not, Senator Torres? Do you have a point of information?
Yeah, I just wanted to bring up, there's a lot of discussion about LLCs being more suitable for large corporations with very big profit margins. But an LLC also, if you go back to the committee report, and just if you're not sure about this, there's a lot of testimony in there that is very practical to the Guam scenario and what a lot of people right now are contemplating in their upstart businesses. Many people who are even working out of their homes file for LLCs because of the risk. The, the personal risk is lessened there, and then also the, the fact that the LLC is, has a pass-through, you know, where, where you don't necessarily, you don't have to pay corporate taxes, it can be passed through, and you're taxed on your personal income instead. And so that's the advantage to many people. So I just wanted to bring up that point that before we get too carried away with thinking about, you know, large businesses that are LLCs operating in Guam, go back to the committee report and even consider what it means for the small, the small potatoes on Guam that are trying to, to make it big without having to be a company that's taxed at a company corporate level and not having to be a sole proprietor that, that has a lot of personal risk involved. So it, again, I just want to reiterate that it, it, it has a many-fits-all component to it, and that, I think, is what would help spur the economic rebound on Guam. So if you can just take a look at the committee report, I think it, it gives you a sense of how that shoe can fit someone like you or I, or one of our family members or friends who's looking to start up a business as an LLC. And the advantages to that, especially with a reduced fee. Thank you, filing fee. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Torres. On the main motion, if not, Senator Jim, you may close.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Again, our objective for this bill was not only to lower the cost of such filing for LLCs, but to really establish a business-friendly policy. And it's also to encourage more, more small business entrepreneurs, which we have over 450 or so small business entrepreneurs on Guam. And they invest their own resources in starting their small business to support their families. And they have the hope of growth, which creates economic development. Our small businesses are job creators, starting with themselves. So that's one less job seeker who will hire other job seekers and who will pay taxes and grow our economy. Our small businesses are heroes of our economy, Madam Speaker. They are the job creators who drive the economy and make a huge contribution to our island's prosperity. And if we're just talking about, it's a one-time license fee of $1,000, for what reason, we don't know. But it's, it's out of the pocket of that entrepreneur when they have so much other things to worry about. As our, as this government, our duty is to help prosper these small businesses, to generate the taxes that we desperately need to support our government services. Especially during this time of COVID, when we're wondering how many of these small businesses do still want to open their doors when they do have the chance? Or why would they? Or why would they? When, when we don't make it as helpful as we can to them? Sure, we have, we, we could use the additional income, but we can't bank on that and the budget. We have a lot of uncertainties with the budget that we did pass. Some have great aspirations that we passed a budget too low. But alls I know is that we, we really have to get these small businesses going and wanting to stay on the island, to hire our local, local folks, and to expand their services, which in turn will come back in the form of general, general revenue funds. If it attracts other businesses from off-island, so be it. That's the creation of more jobs. But the way it stands right now, there's a lot of uncertainties. And I think it's really important that this body really consider doing the right thing, and that's by supporting these small businesses, so they can hire our, our folks as well, and we can get out, back on our feet after we get through this pandemic. I thank you, Madam Speaker, for the opportunity. Thank you, colleagues.
Thank you, Senator Jim. Senator Jim, on the motion to put it in the voting file, please.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I wish to move Bill 13335 into third reading voting file, please.
On that motion, are there any objections? Seeing or hearing none? Motion carries. Colleagues, we are now on Bill 185-35 COR. Senator Sabina?
Yes, thank you, Madam Speaker. Just give me a moment. Yeah, notwithstanding House rules, I move that Bill number 185-35 COR be placed at the bottom of the second reading file.
On the motion to place Bill 185-35 COR to the bottom of the session agenda? Are there any objections? Seeing or hearing none? Motion carries. On the next item is Bill number 197-35 LS, Legislative Secretary Senator Amanda Shelton.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. At this time, I'd also like to move Bill number 197-35 to the bottom of the file.
On that motion, colleagues, are there any objections? Seeing or hearing none? Motion carries. We are now on Bill number 217-35 COR. Senator Jim Moylan, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I wish to place Bill 21735 on third reading, reading file, and I would like to discuss it.
Sir, can you do me a favor on, on the bill number? Can you just quote the, whether it's an LS or COR, the author's name, and then read the title, please?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Bill 21735-4, authored by myself, is an act to add subsection 58104R to chapter 58, title 12, Guam Code Annotated, relative to creating a qualifying certificate for the enticement and potential establishment of commercial drone industry on Guam. Madam Speaker.
On that motion, please proceed, Senator Moylan.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. This bill was introduced back in October of 2019, and actually, it's for the purpose, and most especially now with COVID situation, to spur the economy by attracting a new industry, which will create jobs. This bill simply adds commercial drone industry to GITA's matrix. And this, this is what the investors do look for, what, what is on the matrix. So we're simply adding the commercial drone industry to GITA's matrix. Since the introduction of this bill, we received interest from local companies, companies here that wish to expand for that purpose. And this bill, this bill does not dictate the benefits that GITA offers, because that's GITA's function, it's not the legislature. So Guam, as we've learned, is ideal location to Asia to entice these technology aviations and aeronautics. And also, most recently, from, we have other companies that are interested, that we've learned as well, that wish to come from the U.S., to come to Guam. And there's great investments to do such a thing with the distance involved, I mean, bringing their companies to Guam, with the military buildup especially, but, but also the growth of the drone industry. This industry fulfills the needs for, for many, many types of, of businesses, such as construction, agriculture, agriculture and survey, and engineering, and utilities, and telecommunications, and infrastructure development industries as well. Madam Speaker, adding commercial drone industry to the matrix of GITA incentivizes and can attract both local and outside interest for new industries offering new jobs most critically needed during our time now, and skills for our community to develop higher learning incentives, too, and higher-paying jobs, hopefully. So, thank you, Madam Speaker, and I'm looking forward to further discussion on Bill 21735.
Thank you, Senator Jim. On the main motion, anyone wishing to speak? Anyone wishing to speak on the main motion? Senator Clint, Senator Perez, and then Senator, Senator Perez, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I do appreciate the, the efforts of the author to diversify our economy. I think this is really important. I'm just looking over some of the comments that were made in the committee report, and I noticed that the bill has not been edited. So one of the comments that GITA had brought up was that the, the use of the word utilization, and so incorporating that word would open up the QC's to businesses such as, it would expand the use of the QC for many other types of businesses that are not necessarily those that are strictly or directly involved in the manufacture and the training of, of these unmanned vehicles. Just, I guess, maybe perhaps that, that's my reservation, is regarding some of the amendments that were proffered or offered by GITA, and if the author is willing to make those changes to the bill. So one of the, so the question regards to utilization, the verbiage of utilization, striking that. And then the other thing was opening up the QC to international and national companies, which would kind of undermine the purpose of the QC program.
Would you like?
That's a question for the author, yes.
Senator Jim, did you hear that question? Would you like to yield?
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and thank you for the question. Yes, I totally agree with the recommendation per my colleague and the review by, by GITA. My office is working at that, at this time for, to make the amendment as, as necessary on 217. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Senator Perez?
Yeah, thank you.
Does that suffice?
Yes, thank you, Madam Speaker. I do, it does suffice.
Thank you. Senator Rigel, on the motion?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'd just like to point out that this bill was in my committee. I did report the bill out as is, at the request of the author of the bill, but there were some recommendations made, as mentioned by the retiring speaker, Senator Perez, there were some recommendations with regards to, from GITA, as well as the legal bureau. So our Legislative Legal Bureau provided a review with recommendations for consideration to amend language, providing definitions for commercial drones, unmanned aerial vehicles, or unmanned aircraft systems. However, again, the main, the primary sponsor of the measure requested that we report the bill out as is. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Rigel. Anyone else wishing to speak on the main motion? Anyone else? Senator Justin Augustine, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'd like to just mention that, number one, any bill that wants to open up business is good. For QC, great, if GITA can accept it, and they can process it. And because the author of the bill has identified that he's got some amendment, I just highly recommend, because of the time right now, that maybe this would be a, a good time for us to recess, so that hopefully his staff can put it together, and then when we come back, we can hear the amendments, and then we can support this bill to open up the drone industry on Guam. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Augustine. Before we do that request, anybody else on the main motion? Anyone else on the main motion? Anyone else on the motion? Can you restate your motion then, Senator St. Augustine?
Ma'am, that, Madam Speaker, that, because the author mentioned their, their staff is working on the amendments, that at this time, we do take a recess, and that we return, when we return back, hopefully, all the amendments are in order, and we can hear it, and we can support it. Maybe come back at, at 2:30?
2:30. On that motion, without any objection, motion carries.